Is that working out for everyone?
Yes, sorry about that.
Okay, that's fine. Sorry, everyone, we just have to work out a few technical difficulties. We have a guest presenter for the meeting later tonight and we had a few different microphones hooked up. So that is what accounted for the delay. We will start the recall to order the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 23 budget for the cohesive public schools as of 5:36 PM. Would all committee members that are present, please indicate so in roll call, Mrs. Colery? Mr. Dial is not present. Mr. Kearney is not present. Mrs. St. Arch.
Present.
And I am present, Craig McClellan. So as three of the five committee members are present, we do have a forum. We will perceive the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is, of course, to invite public comment on the school committee's deliberation on and certification of the proposed FY23 budget. And we will turn right to our Director of Finance and Operations in order to lead us through the proposed budget. Mrs. Susan Owen.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. This is the FY23 budget proposal. We've worked diligently as an admin team. We've worked with advisory school committee. We've been multiple, multiple meetings trying to make and meet with the budget and what we were wanted. So we'll just walk through process now. These are our FY23 budget priorities. You can see we have teaching and learning, social emotional wellness, resources, and communication engagement. So these tie into our strategic plan, which we worked, worked on the last year and a half. And these is what we put forward as our priorities. And you'll see our requested, our requested budget, our FY22 appropriated budget is $21,684,032. Going forward, our contractual obligations or rule of course, which steps and remains is approximately $780,732. We had $53,323 increase in our circuit breaker funding. So that helps offset some of our expenses. But then we also had an increase in our special intuitions in the amount $215,606. And then we, as we normally do, as we project, we've had multiple people put in for their retirement savings. And what that means is we have some people that are at the higher, higher end of the salary scale that will be leaving us and will have some possibly fresh young teachers coming here at a different, different level on the salary scale. So our priority request, $763,015.
Not that our better teachers are fresh.
That's right. Then, then we have some, some asks, some, you know, needs to have in order to move the district, open doors, do enrollment, we need to add a grade two teacher at the Oscar elementary school. We also need a, to add a math specialist to middle school based on MCAST scores and working on some of our, our learning gaps. We, a few weeks ago, school committee voted to increase our substitute teacher rate from $80 per day to $100 per day, juicy additional $25,000 there. Increase to supplies, materials. At one point, this was 108,000. We worked diligently this week to drill that number down and work, go forward and work with just what we felt we needed to have to get, to get rolling. And then we also, as we started process last year, we continued the process of full day kindergarten, which was $20,000, $25,000. So our additional recommendation for 220,018. Total additions to the budget over last year or this year was $983,033. However, we had to make some reductions. We did not lose any positions. We did not lay off any staff. We did not cut anyone between the towns collaboration with, with the school department. We currently fund just about three IT support staff. And the town is transferring the funding of one of those IT support people back to the town size budget. And that, that was the same exposure to $69,000. We met with the town accountant, the town manager, advisory and school committee. And we agreed that for the increase in our spent tuition, which is about 215,000, we could by policy utilize up to $200,000 in our spent stabilization fund. So we are going to ask the school committee needs to vote to use the $200,000 and select board also has to vote. We athletic trainer currently, the athletic trainer is funded completely from the school budget account. Because he is the athletic trainer and we have an athletic revolving account. It makes sense if a portion of his salary should be paid for through the, that revolving. So we, that's just a transfer of what account his, out of his salaries being paid from. And then as much as we didn't want to, we agreed to remove the additional $25,000 reduction for the kindergarten, $25,000, at least for this year. Our, our, you know, our hope is that at some point you have free full day K which if in a way, got it as best we can. So as much as we didn't want to have to make changes, we did. We made sure it was, you know, will least, least affect on people and staff. So our budget reductions were about $322,113. When you put it all together, you have the FY22 appropriated budget. You have the original additions of the 983,000. You have a budget reductions of 322,000. And our requested increase over FY22 is $660,920, which is the exact amount the town is allocating to the school department. That is equitable to a 3.05% increase over the current year. Bring us to about a budget of $22,344, Thank you. When we basically make it on 22,000.
Real history.
Right? So that, that's it summarized in piecemeal. The, this is the worksheet that you've seen from the beginning. I blessed the ads, the suppression. So you can see the work that we went through because we were originally at a 4.6 or 4.8% increase. So we had these down to 3.447, which is what the town allocation was. So this is just a summary of those contractual obligations, the increase, the circuit breaker, the staffing requests. You could see we put in the increase to full day K, but then below you can see that we removed it, the 25,000, at least for this year. So again, it, it just represents the same numbers that we just talked about to 3.05% increase, $660,920 to give us a $22,344,352 budget.
Okay, thank you, Owen. Oh, okay.
That's just the overarching summary. This is the back up to the substitute teacher increase. You know, school may vote to increase substitute teacher pay for 200 days. Here is the breakdown of what surrounding districts are paying. Then we went into the Joseph Osford and what the Oscar priorities, principal barrel foot forward her, her priorities, which are here, support social emotional well being, strengthen cultural competency, woman and multi-tier support. What is what co-teaching, implement math curriculum to establish and evaluate assessments being used and analyzed there to drive instruction, continue to upkeep the facility and to increase the number of classroom teachers on the grade two based on it. Going forward to see her data that she used, what her priorities. This is the enrollment for her, for her, for all is good right now. So it gives you the, the current year, 2021, 22, the class size, and then the enrollment for next year. And you can see the grade two, grade one currently has 107 with six sections. And that's what we want to continue going into next year.
Yeah, and just to drive that home, the importance of that position is to keep the numbers very low in our elementary. You know, we recognize that it was a, not a typical situation for our kindergarteners over the last year or two. And the preparedness for first grade, when you really start diving into reading was not at the level that we're, we're accustomed to. So we really want to ensure that that early literacy and numeracy too is, is counted, accounted for in our grade two, for our grade two students. It's a big, big position for us.
Just more of a supporting data from the Oscar elementary. Then we go to the Deer Hill Elementary with Principal Sullivan. First school priorities, the other curriculum introduction model, math curriculum, alignment of curriculum assessment, family and community engagement, social emotional learning, multi-tier support, facility. So you see some similar similar priorities here, which kind of go in line with our stretch plan. The enrollment for the Deer Hill School is here to the 21, 22 and the 22, 23. They're not asking for any additional sections. That will probably come next year when that grade five, grade two moves forward.
Possibly.
Possibly. More data to support school priorities and budget requests. So she's broken it down into a pie chart. Budget request to support is the culturally sponsored, that's how we map curriculum, educational software, technology hardware and progression of the domain updates. So these, which is a potential thing through, through all schools. And we get to the middle school with Principal John Mills. These are his priorities, development of the multi-tiered system, development of curriculum teaching practices, morning opportunities and morning equitable opportunities for, for and social emotional well was forced to. So again, continuing things. So at the middle school, we've asked to add a math specialist or math interventionist. Develop, develop that multi-tiered system of support, support students at different academic and social emotional levels. And I am cause we'll show that we need some help with this.
Yeah, it does. And not even beyond MCAST scores. That's correct. But even beyond MCAST scores, it's just the ability to continue the support that's happening at our elementary in mathematics up at the middle school level. We've never had an interventionist that can do the kind of work that's needed to continue that, that help for our students. And so, you know, that it's just crucial for them. This is a big position, as was our position we had last year when we added our first reading specialist at the middle school. You know, they, they really kind of, I think, are sort of bookends of the support network that we need for our students. And when we're, as we're establishing a more robust MTSS.
More data supporting budget priorities. The middle school enrollment for the current year and for the projected next year is down just four students. This just goes back to our strategic plan about curriculum, teaching practices.
Yep. And again, this is an exciting position because of the, for me, it's because of the coding. And this is really an emphasis on the coding, not as much on the design process. Although that's part of it, a lot of the classes at this level in other districts, you see really focus on the building of the robot more as sort of intro physics. This is not what this, this class is more on the coding and robotics. And it's very much part of our plan to build a more robust technology, computer science, curriculum pathway from pre-K to 12. So this is a great position, very excited about it.
Talks more about the coding force. Well, I'm not going to read through every slide. This is just to support the project-based learning and then, you know, that's a priority. It's all, it's all the economic apple. It goes along with the requests. Again, you see multi, multi-tiered systems for just gives us the information.
And this is, this is great. You know, one of our focus points this year is really getting student voice. This is a nice example of, you know, how important new student activities are and what the students are saying about it. Now, it's wonderful as we formed an independent middle school to have students really owning the culture. And you're seeing that in a lot of ways. And this is a perfect example of it. So I just love that you put this in there.
And the cross-country team, the newspaper really taken off.
Yeah, they really are. I mean, the amount of kids in cross-country is astounding. It's such a great program for our kids and newspapers always been strong.
We want to count class high school with Principal Scott. He lists school priorities, which implement personal, personalized learning and project-based learning into curriculum teaching and learning, improve the student learning experience, foster wellness by reducing academic stress and providing personalized learning paths for success. So if you, you can, you can see the theme to all the schools and they all tie back to strategic. The enrollment for this year and the following year.
Yeah, I decide this is, I would just want to make the point that, you know, although we're asking for some important positions, there are many positions that we aren't asking for in this, in this budget. And there's a lot of directions that our strategic plan points us towards. Some of those areas that we want to be exploring in the, in the coming years are building a therapeutic, therapeutic program district wide. Barbara Suwanka, our director of student services, talked a lot about how this would help us as a district, making sure we keep students in district who have needs. But this would help every student in our, in our district as well. Our computer science pathway, which you can start to see evolving. A couple of years ago, we showed you sort of beginnings of that branch tree where we were going to be moving our, our program both vertically and horizontally. Assistant principals at the elementary school, or at least we're looking probably at one for each. Down the road, most school districts who have elementary schools our size do have an assistant principal that, that works in that. We want to explore that for sure. We also want to explore the expansion of our pre-K program. We have an amazing pre-K program and I, we believe firmly that adding a section to that would be very popular and would bring a lot of customers in. By customers, I mean little kids. Introducing elementary foreign language. Many, many districts have that. And it's such an important thing to really, if we're going to have a more vibrant and successful foreign language program, to introduce it at the early levels. Love to see that. Human resources, cultural support, really thinking about potential, the potential of a director of human and cultural resources. And perhaps this could tie into DEI. They may be distinct positions, but I think that having a full, full district approach to diversity, equity, and inclusion is really important. But I also think having someone as a, as a driver to it, that in a small district like ours could also help us some of our human resource points, which we, we definitely need, would be a great addition. Science specialists at the elementary, we've done some good work with embedded professional development. It would be nice to push that forward in the coming years with a, a position or two. And as you'll hear in our architectural study, the ability to have more vocational and innovative options at our, particularly at our middle school and high school would be wonderful. The space to do it would also be wonderful, but having those programs is something we certainly want to look at moving forward. Continuing the introduction of free K. You know, we're one of the few districts that's still charged for our full day kindergarten. We need to move in that direction. There are going to be a multitude of continued ongoing needs in social emotional learning, teaching kids the competencies from Castle. Also being able to support culturally responsive teaching district wide. You've seen a lot of our training that has, but to do that programmatically as well will be important. Project-based learning, you can see that that, that approach is happening. And you can see it in the presentation today, there'll be more budgetary needs in that direction. Long-term transportation solutions, and I'll mention this in the school committee meeting, that, you know, we certainly want to look at what we're going to be doing long-term for our, for our buses. You know, we have a one-year lease extension, but what do we want to do? Do we want to, to continue that lease, sort of want to do something in a different direction? Where are we going to park and house our buses? Still very much in the air. That could be money associated with that. And then, of course, technology integration and this idea of blended learning. And then finally, an ongoing need to support communication engagement. And this isn't a completely comprehensive list, but it's, it's a pretty good indicator of some of the directions that we're hoping to move in, which our strategic plan points us in. And of course, this communication engagement would also include some upgrades on our website, which I need and which I know already works. So I think that concludes our budget presentation. I'll turn it over to you, Chairman Collin, if you have any questions from the committee or if you want a discussion or if there are any comments from the community.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Owen. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. And I would ask that we, that we turn to comments or input from the community before we deliberate as individual school committee members. Normally do, and this is any objection to that, but if known. Are there any comments? We'll just, I'll just give everyone a few minutes. If you are watching, there's absolutely no one here for the budget meeting in person. But there may be, there are a few people for here early for the school committee meeting. But if you're participating virtually in the public hearing, traditionally we don't, or historically we don't have a lot of attendance for this, unfortunately. Please utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom to make your comment or ask any questions you'd like. It doesn't look like anyone has any, but we'll be allowing the school committee members to make comments. So if you have any comments, just, just chime in at any time. And, and as we get through the school committee deliberations, we will, we'll get to them. Ms. Clear, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments. I do look forward to the presentation that we'll be seeing during the school committee meeting. I feel like I, I think there are a lot of opportunities to your point about therapeutic programming resources here in the district that would be wonderful for us to have in the district. So it's that we will as a community come together to find a way to make that resource available for our families. But thank you very much for all of the work. And thank you to members of the
Mrs. Colery, Ms. St. Arch, anything?
Two things, I guess. I'm really disappointed that we are taking away the kindergarten reduction. And I know that that's just math, but I think that really sticks. And I think that's like a commitment that we had talked about, we are really committed to. And I think it's extremely unfortunate that that's happening and kind of embarrassing to me because we were trying to go in that direction. And if it's not, that's not a personal comment, it's just, it really sticks. And so I just want, I'll just put that in the record that I do. And also, as we're looking at goals, I like the last slide of where we're going. And I'm thinking that as we are thinking about, you know, growing programs, looking at reading specialists and math specialists at the middle school, I'm hoping that in, in future thought, that that will be expanded into the high school realm as well. I mean, when kids are getting support in elementary school and middle school, it's not like magic happens and you're no longer getting support nine through 12 and beyond, frankly. So I just hope that that's part of our future conversations. I think it's so important as, as we continue to kind of I don't know, recover, move forward from our pandemic learning. I think it's very interesting right now, looking at benchmark assessments and mid-year report cards and growth and thinking about just, just how much, I guess, is, I don't know, maybe it's just my head is feeling like a little clearer, but the fact that my fourth grader, the last time she had a complete year of school was first grade. I was doing MCAST practice with fourth grade. And I know this feels tangential, but I'm not. MCAST practice with fourth graders at where I work. Wow, your writing has grown so much this year. And the teacher said, I know, but think about it. The last time we had a full year to work on writing for them, they were in first grade. Yeah. So I just anticipate the need for that support even more than usual, right? So just like, just so we're keeping that on our radar. I, yeah, I guess I'm just going to sit here and be disappointed about the kindergarten for a while. I'm just kind of wallow in it. Thank you for your hard work. That was very creative. Read a lot. Of course, of course, but just like take the credit, so come on. No, it was, it was, that was very clever just because I feel like we were very far apart before. And I know I'm not a part of those side team efforts, but I, I have some very creative thinking that's been done in the past couple of years. Looking at how, how budgets can be used creatively. So.
There is a community question.
Yes, Mrs. Barry has a comment. So why don't we go to Mrs. Barry's comment? Did she know her address?
Yes, Megan Barry, 11 Tadler. Does the proposed budget include six teachers for the incoming kindergarten?
Yes.
We commonly have sex and that, it does.
Thank you, Mrs. Barry. Okay, I just want to note quickly, first of all, your disappointment is well founded, Mrs. St. Arch. I share it. It is definitely an example of this committee reneging on a promise that it made. And I just want to be candid about that. And it was difficult, cut to make that said. Anyone that knows me has heard me use the phrase, it's the juice worth the squeeze. And I want to note that unlike a lot of past years where we were forced to actually cut substantive improvements or additions to the district, our budget committee found a way in conjunction and collaboration with especially advisory committee, the town, Chris Senior, and, and the select board, specifically Kerry Thompson and Corey Evans. We were able to figure out how to get down from our initial four, seven, four, eight increase to the necessary 305 or the agreed upon 305 without, without deleting or taking away any of those substantive improvements, which we deem as critical needs. And they are critical needs, make no mistake. But I am proud of the fact that we were still able to add these positions. All of this, all of those, those substantive improvements are still being made. And so that is in, 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 in the face of what I would characterize as a town-wide budgetary crisis right now. I do not think our town draws the revenue it needs to operate optimally or effectively. And that goes for all departments and the school department is, is not an exception. And despite that, we were able to still have these positions. I'm, I'm, I'm particularly excited about the second grade teacher. I think that we're going to see that, you know, we're going to see some learning gaps there. It's a really critical year, especially preparing to go, there's a big jump from second grade to third grade. We need to make sure that the students have the support they need in making that transition. I mean, everything we asked for was critical, but, but I'm, I'm especially excited about that. So, and again, none of these are, I say, like it's not, we were having like a holographic projectors in every classroom, I mean, something really awesome that we can't wait to see next year, right? These are things that we basically, you know, needed already. And we were treading water, the pandemic. And I made this analogy, I think, in another meeting recently, was sort of like, you know, someone tossing us a big weight while we're treading water. And it really exposed a lot of shortcomings in the district that we really had to fill. And so that said, I am proud that we did that. And, and so to explain to everyone that, yes, we knowingly reneged on that promise because of the kindergarten intuition, because it was something that we can delay. This is not canceling that. It's just delaying in the, in the face of a very, very tight budget. It's a very difficult budget year. And so it's $25,000 that we could use to approve the district. This is still an important initiative and we have every intention of ensuring that kindergarten becomes free and go assets. So, you know, I, I'll, I'll, I'll take, you know, I'll take personal, you know, blame for that. It was something that, you know, we deemed necessary in our conversations. But thank you, thank you, thank you to all of the other town committees that collaborated with us and helped us, especially eventuary novices myself, understand the ins and outs and help us with these reallocations, the things that we saw that helped us turn down our request. without trimming down our improvements. So thank you so much. Are there any other public comments, Ms. Cleary? Okay, so with that, are there any other comments from the school committee members present? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Kearney is on.
Mr. Kearney is on, but he's not making any comment.
Oh, but he's present.
Oh, he is present, yes, and he was present, I will tell you. As of yes. Hold on one moment. Miss, I will just note for the record that Mr. Kearney was present as of 5:38 PM. Okay, so that concludes the public hearing on the FY23 budget. Is there a motion to adjourn and move into the regularly scheduled school? Oh, no, we vote on the school.
Oh, in the school.
Yes.
That's correct.
That's on the agenda for the vote.
Do we have to adjourn and then reroll call just to?
We have to adjourn, yeah.
I would like to move to adjourn the public voters here.
Okay, it's been a motion to a hearing of public hearing on FY23 budgets, or second? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? I. Okay, motion clear, all opposed. I mean, there's no one else here, and I just heard Ms. Cleary, Ms. Seigneur vote, so. But I should ask that anyway, motion clearly passes, the public hearing is adjourned, and we will immediately move into the school committee meeting. So I'll call to order the March 30th, 2022, meeting of the school committee meeting, meeting of the school committee, excuse me, with all members that are present, who didn't case on roll call, Ms. Cleary. Style is not present at this time, but Kearney is present virtually.
Present.
Seigneur. I present Craig McClellan, that's four out of five members that are present. We have a quorum, and we will move right into public comment. I'll just reiterate the rules surrounding public comment. This is a time for the members of our community to make comments or raise discussion points or ask questions that are not related, that are not related topics that are already on the agenda. If you have something that is related to something that's on the agenda, please wait until we arrive at that point in the meeting to raise your question or your discussion point. Also, I'll just reiterate the rules surrounding community participation. We're trying to streamline the meetings a bit, so we've instituted a three comment per household rule, meaning any questions, follow up questions or comments, you as a household, so that could be spouses, partners, anyone in the same household. Even if your student is asking a question, that would be that would count. So three total per household and use those at any time in any way you'd like. That's not to restrict anyone. We hope everyone's able to communicate their thoughts within three comments, but we do need to keep these meetings moving, and historically, they have gone for a long time. So with that said, I'll stop talking, allow members of the public to make a public comment if they have any. Give a few minutes for or a few seconds rather for people to utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom to do that. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. So we'll turn to the superintendent's report before we do all welcome our visitors from well, first, the chairperson of the school facilities committee that is here, and we'll be presenting along with our our design professionals, AI three architects, to provide in existing conditions presentation on the existing conditions of our schools. I know there's more before they do that, but I'm just welcomed into the meeting. So at this point, we'll turn to the superintendent's report, and I turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Thank you, Chairman McClellan. And it's good to good to see Jake here as who Jake Squatrito is.
Yes, sorry, Jake.
It's okay.
We moved.
Yeah, there's Jake, right? But Jake is one of our obviously student liaisons, and I'm excited to get the the SSAC back together next week. Talk about some important work to to move forward. It's this has been a couple of weeks of some things we haven't done before. Are we happening again? And Jake may talk about some of these, but just to mention a couple of them. We had a simple dance at the high school, which is wonderful to see. We have a dance, the first one in two years, believe it or not, happening at our middle school next Friday, very, very excited for that. I know middle school kids are just ecstatic. Some haven't had a dance in middle school yet, so that's that's a wonderful thing. Our sports, as I mentioned last time, are over running. We're very excited. There's a sports info night happening tonight, actually. I believe at seven o'clock, and that's always important for our spring sport families. We had two amazing all town, all town concerts. That was wonderful. We haven't had one of those in a few years. It's great to see the the students from grades four through 12 participate so earnestly in chorus, band, performing. We had a ninth grade parent curriculum night, parent guardian curriculum night, which happened last week.
Yes.
Which was very informative and well attended right here in this in this setting. And, you know, just as an operational, we are beginning MCAS in the next few weeks. So we have our students preparing, and we're preparing to help those students as they take this major, major exam, which takes a lot of time and can cause some stress. So we're looking to to support them as they so they can show all of their work. So that's a it's a really good thing. And I know we do have another update from Dr. Skolins, but I guess at this point, I'll turn it over to Jake to fill us in on any interesting details that are happening district wide from a student perspective. So Jake Squatrito.
Yeah, I know. It's been a while since I've been here. Definitely like a lot has changed. First of all, like, just personally, like, going sort of back to like normal, you know, has been really good, and it's nice to just sort of like go to school and all I have to do is just learn and not worry about who got COVID that week around, you know? Like, it's nice to just be able to go to school, be myself, be a human. You know, that's been really great to get back to that. Something else I wanted to bring up was I did, I don't know how much you guys know about, like, the project adventure in the high school, but I did it for the first time during health class last week, and I'm like the first person to be super cynical about all that stuff. Oh, it was boring. It wasn't fun and
You did the climbing wall?
No, we didn't do that yet. There's still worthy of getting certified for that.
Right.
Probably before I'm done with health next week. So, um, but, um, no, it was like a ton of fun, and I thought it achieved like everything that it wanted to, like in terms of like working with your team, like everybody in the class was getting along. Everybody was working together, so I thought that was really nice, and I just wanted to give that like a shout out because it was really cool.
Can you describe a few of like facets of that, like you experienced?
So I missed the first day that my class did it, but when I was there, it was like a big map that like you couldn't touch, and then in the middle was two like swings, like ropes that you like swung around on kind of. And we just did like different challenges in terms of like getting around. You had to work with everybody, like communicating, making sure you have certain people in certain places at specific times, you know, like being patient, working with others. And it just like went really well, and everybody was just like really worked really well together. So that was really great to see.
Yeah, it's a really, it's really nice because it it levels the playing field, so to speak, right? Because everybody has to participate, and everybody has to bring their strengths to the table for everybody to do what they need to do. So I'm so excited that you really thought it was great.
Yeah, no, it was a lot of fun, right?
Yeah. That's great. It says a lot about your class, too, that they were able to come together in a very short period of time.
Yeah, I know.
Right?
Really well.
And the teachers, they love it, so that's great.
Yeah, you were a pretty special class for sure.
And how's everything else? Is everything okay, you know?
It's good.
April, April's Friday, right?
It was close. So, you know, it's kind of about to all fly by really quick, but I think pretty much everyone's done with like getting decisions from colleges. People are just sort of starting to know where they're gonna go, how everything's gonna work out. And I think, you know, pretty much everybody's happy and, you know, feeling good about where they're gonna be.
Good, good. Yeah, the next two months are really special.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for Jake?
I didn't. I had work. I couldn't get it covered.
All right, well, that was my question. Is your health class nine through 12? It's just senior.
It's just seniors.
Makes the adventure different. Yeah, well, it's really special for that, too.
Yeah.
But it's nice when it's multi age. Yeah, just curious. How can I do it? It was multi H L.
I have any questions? Thank you so much.
Send it by that. Have a great night, Jake. Much appreciated. Okay, so I know that Dr. Skolins has an update on our student opportunity act. I have it here.
It'll be quick. So while Dr. Sullivan's pulling this up, so you may or may not have remembered, but in 2019, it was the Student Opportunity Act was passed, and so it was asked of us to look at some focus areas and and find some areas or groups of people that may needed some additional support. So we, so here's the kind of thing, they wanted to really look at how do you reduce that achievement gap in groups that need, we tend to need more support, right? So we were to really look at that specific subgroup for us in our district and then look at some research-based programs. They're really just trying to shore things up. And so things go away to the next slide. And so this was really just kind of that big piece. We really wanted to look at the reading achievement gap. And so although we are looking at all students, the the act actually asked us to look at a targeted group, but we felt we might as well do it for everyone. And during this time, the pandemic happened, so that really drove it home for us to really think about pandemic. We'd already decided it was reading achievement, and then the pandemic happened, and we said, oh, yeah, we really need to do this. So so what they've asked us to do now is to kind of say, all right, what have you done? And what are you going to do kind of next? So I'll just quickly tell you, you know, our subgroup was our students with special needs. So those are students on IPs or students on 504s. And what we really want to see is can we help reduce those rates in our upper grade levels around those with specific learning disabilities? We want to look at growth in our ELA scores and see, you know, what areas that we need to improve and how can we improve that as when they get to us. So we decided to do the early literacy, they gave you a few that you could choose from, and we chose literacy and that is a pre is a, they said pre K through our grade three. So we are actually doing Joseph Odsgood through grade two. And we really wanted to look at MTSS, which is another thing that we were working on because we wanted to make sure that we were addressing foundational skills, making sure that we had programming in place to address those needs, and then how we and that sort of thing says Harper Smock is working on with our team right now to kind of shore those up. So this was the original plan that we had was that we have Reading Street as one of our materials. Reading Street, we have all the books, but the online component has expired, but that's we still have the resources, and we have foundations in place, which is our phonics program. We have Lexia, which is an online platform, which is adaptive, and that is all the way from K through five. And then Wilson Training for for those tier three instruction that we need or special education and that we offered, but a lot was impacted by the pandemic. People couldn't continue one for like their certification for two. And so we were asked what kinds of things we were going to measure it by. And again, we're gonna look at ELA achievement and look at the growth percentile under our MCAS. But things that we added, so we kind of changed things up, and this is part of the amendment piece, is we always had Dibbles eight, but we also add the I Ready Reading Diagnostic, which went through K through eight, and families got that that report last week. And then we still are going to continue to look at those percentage of students are identifying that self. And we're gonna be looking for reduction. That that didn't change. But adding the I Ready Diagnostic as well as we do, I didn't put it in here, but because it's not something we'll really be able to use as a metric. But we also have the Shea with dyslexia screener, and both Dibbles eight and I Ready Reading both have a dyslexia screener in it. So if you were to be flagged through some of these and other other assessments we have, then you would get the Shea with as a student, the student get Shea. Next, and so this is just really what we have done. So we had convened the literacy committee in last spring and fall, this fall, and that was a group of teachers that had already been part of a literacy committee over the past few years, and we had added a parent on to it. And and that was nice to kind of get some feedback here, what was going on. We entered a partnership with Teaching Learning Alliance, and in the spring, they did an informal review of our elementary reading program. And out of that, we decided to create some professional development, which I'll talk to you about. But we also created an instructional leadership team, a literacy team, and that started in the fall and have worked together this year to kind of look at literacy and look at our vision for a comprehensive literacy approach. And some of the professional development we've done, again, this is for all, but obviously we'll support our students with special special needs. We had a full day workshop in the fall around the science of reading and best practices for teaching reading, and this is all teachers, whether general ed or special education. We've had differentiated training for all staff in the foundations, our phonics program. Some of our teachers already had experience, others had not. So we've been working all year to make sure everyone has the same language and understands all the fundamentals. Technically, foundations really goes up to grade three, but we felt that grades four and five really needed to understand the program have the same language because they are, we pandemic, and they are going to have to possibly teach some of those foundational pieces. Plus, we also really want to focus on some other pieces around small construction. And then we've had embedded professional development that's worked with K through five around the science of reading and referring the students. And we also sent our reading specialists to a year-long coaching workshop where they met with other people around the state. And so that's been a really good experience because they've been able to share out. And so I made one of the components of making sure that we have stakeholder engagement. So I did present to CPAC about our literacy and assessment. And then we have also contracted with a consultant for specialized reading evaluation K through eight, which involves a survey and interviews with both families and staff. So that will be really informative for us as we look forward to our next steps. And then just for basically the information about the SOA is that I need to tell you. So I'm informing you today about what we've done or where we're going. I will put this on the website. And go on the newsletter, and also I'm gonna click a button because do buy April first.
Pretty soon.
That's right. I'm very close, but I got time.
It's a lot of work. Good time.
After the meeting's over, I will. But yeah, so it's been really exciting, and it just aligns so nicely with everything that we were doing.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Skolins? Thank you, Dr. Skolins.
Wonderful. Okay, so at this point, I'm happy to introduce our guests. I don't know if Chairman McClellan, you might want to introduce them.
No, please do.
Okay, so I know we have the chair of our facilities committee is Jason Earls. Thank you for all your work, and in terms of representing the committee, although if you want to mention the names of the committee, Chairman McClellan in whole in total, or maybe maybe Mr. Earls would, but they've done wonderful work. And from the superintendent's point of view, I can't thank you enough for your thorough approach, and part of which is bringing on our guests here who work for AI three. And Julie, I'm going to miss, I should last thing, so I should say, we have Troy, Troy Randall and Julie.
Really?
Same, same.
Really?
Really? I glad I didn't try. But Julie really, who have done fabulous work, and we've really enjoyed, just as an aside, working with them, part of the visioning process. And we've been very impressed by your thorough approach. I know I speak for everyone here at Quest House Schools we work with. So thank you for that. And further ado, I'll turn it over to you, and I know you have the ability to share your screen, and you may do so when you're ready to do do that. Thank you for being here.
Before you do start, Mr. Randall, just so Mr. Earls is the chairperson, as you noted, at the school facilities committee, and then there's there's there are eight other members. I just want to sort of point them out in case people aren't aware of who they are. The two of those members are on the school committee as well, it's myself and Mr. Kearney, just because we wanted to get the committee constituted and running when we were first. There were different groups that needed nominated, and so the school committee had one nomination that was nonmember, and then two members volunteered to do it. The other school committee appointee was was Kathleen Burns. And we have, we have Doug Schultz and Martin E., Dr. Paul Schubert, who's a former select board member, Nan Roth, and Jen Leskey. And I think that's everyone. Okay, I think I named all nine, yes. So that's it's a nine person committee, and they're working hard, and especially Mr. Earls, who, you know, happened into the the role of chair, which is a, which I know is a, you know, burden of some roles. So we're all very thankful for that, and he's running some great meetings, and we're making a lot of great progress. And I think everyone's going to be really interested in the the information we're gonna hear presented by Mr. Randall and Mr. Kirney. And I think everyone's going to be uh, really interested in the the information we're going to hear presented by Mr. Randall and Mr. Haley right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, Chairman Earls, Chair McClellan, Dr. Sullivan, and the school committee members. We are excited about the, one, the opportunity we presented to the uh, facilities group last week. And uh, we're a wonderful, wonderful group and interactive. Uh, it's been an awesome process so far over the last three months of working with Dr. Sullivan and Chair McClellan and others uh, in the school committee or the the school administration. And so we're going to, we're going to give you just a high level uh, synopsis tonight, thirty thousand feet, but just if you're, if you're not familiar with us, AI three. Uh, this just gives you a uh, a snapshot of some of the work we've been involved with over the past twenty uh, two plus years uh, in the South Shore. The areas where the districts in blue are districts we have collaborated with and and uh, designing new schools, renovations of, and we, that's all we do. We we design schools. We don't drive fire stations or police stations. It's schools, and that's all we've done our entire career. Uh, so research, assessment, design, about seventy-five schools over the last twenty, twenty-two plus years. So what um, what we uh, are going to talk with you tonight about is how the entire report comes together. So it's really two components. One is the physical building assessment and then the educational program assessment. So uh, the physical building assessment, Julie, in a few minutes, we'll really get into some of the details of uh, each school and the findings that our entire team, which is made up of architects and structural engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, site civil. Uh, all of which uh, the entire team visited the uh, the three schools, the three sites and uh, all the findings that uh, the entire team had uh, are contained within the uh, report that Julia will go through. We'll also talk a little bit about the educational program assessment. Uh, our evaluation and uh, uh, walk through the existing building, the assessment of the educational program as it relates to Massachusetts School Building Authority and their regulations. Uh, so we'll get into a little bit of detail about how uh, future design patterns, uh, when we look at existing schools or when we design new schools, how uh, those are part of the assessment and the design of new facilities. This gives you a snapshot of uh, the process. Um, as mentioned previously, we were hired in January. Uh, we set up the entire process with you and the goals of the information gathering occurred in step two, which I mentioned of all of our consultants and architectural team. We interpreted those findings over the last several weeks and then report, uh, collected all that information into uh, report and the executive summary that's been developed as part of this process sort of simultaneously. Uh, and working through April will be the formulation. And I know uh, Dr. Sullivan and his team has started that process of developing the statement of interest for the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the middle high school. Uh, so we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that in uh, in a few minutes. But that gives you a snapshot. April is the significant month where uh, the approvals by the school committee, the approvals by the uh, select board as part of the statement of interest will occur. And so uh, the entire process will be essentially finalized in uh, the end of April. Uh, for the SOI will be uh, prior to April twenty-ninth, but for the report and the uh, additional information related to capital improvement repairs for each of the schools, that will be completed in May. So you'll have a final report in in May. I'm going to turn it over to Julie just for a minute uh, to talk a little bit about the existing conditions.
Sure. So as Troy mentioned, we have completed a first draft of the existing condition study. And as of right now, it's two hundred fourteen pages. And we won't go through all of those tonight, but we just wanted to explain that we have it divided into these four main topics. On the introduction, the executive summary, and then the physical building evaluations and the educational program evaluations. And so tonight, we're just going to give a summary, um, which would be that second part, executive summary, and we'll um, share our findings from those two assessments. Um, we did utilize the scoring system that's shown here from one to six, and that was just something that a tool that we use to ultimately compare the schools across the district. So that would give us a sense of where they fall compared to one another, um, with one being the most critical items and then six being not so critical. And this is just some um, imagery of our report itself. So you can see that it includes spreadsheets, diagrams, and plans. Um, images of schools themselves. Um, summary of physical building assessment. We just want to preface this by saying, when you first walk into the schools and the Cohasset Middle High School, for example, when you first walk in, it doesn't seem like there is anything wrong with it, um, which is really a testament to the facilities department and the operations and maintenance that have gone into keeping all three schools up and running. Um, that's been Nick and his team have been really helpful in dividing us with information. Um, and just everything that they've done to keep the schools looking the way that they do. When we start to peel back the layers, though, of what we're seeing, um, with the Cohasset Middle High School, ultimately, the score fell at two point eight, which is an average of these evaluation categories that we're seeing on the left-hand column. Um, and so that sort of lands in a potentially critical potentially critical kind of criteria. Um, and when you think about that, it seems good. And it is because anything sort of at a critical stage, you wouldn't necessarily need to be using as your school still. Um, so that kind of keeps um, keeps it within the realm of possibility. And so looking at some of those aspects that brought the score down, right from the top, the accessibility within the school was a critical issue. Um, and that being that much of the school does not comply with the ADA or Disabilities Act standards. And that's not surprising. Um, those would have been put in place after original construction of the school. And so if any renovations were to be underway, um, that was just something that would have to be updated um, in order to make the school inclusive for everybody. Um, and then something else that was critical was really the interior environment as it relates to air quality, moisture control, thermal comfort. These were things that when Troy and I entered and we were doing our assessment, it was obvious that some rooms were hotter than others, some were colder. Um, the air maybe felt moist, the finishes were deteriorating in some spaces. And there was even sort of that smell of mildew, which were all just signs of standing moisture. Um, and from what we've heard from facilities and administration, um, this is sort of a persistent issue, and it's something that um, they've been maintaining and staying on top of. So any sort of remediation or mold or mildew, none of that lasts long, but it doesn't stay away either. Um, and so those were sort of two really critical areas that brought the score down a lot. Um, and we have speculated that, um, if we look at sort of the exterior envelope systems, that would be the roof and the walls of the building skipping down a little bit. Um, the two to three range for score was also evident that maybe the exterior wall system isn't performing as well as it could be. And this is ultimately having a greater impact on the interior environment of the school. Um, and some of those things that might have impacted the exterior envelope being the original construction of the masonry. Um, and so we were looking at the um, construction documents from the nineteen fifty's and noticed that this masonry wall construction, for example, doesn't have continuous insulation, which is something you would see in a new building today. Given that it's masonry, it doesn't have any airspace in between that CMU backup wall and the exterior brick. Um, and both being porous materials. And so those are just sort of weeping water in. And as that mixes with the moisture from the warm spaces on the interior, you're just getting an excess of condensation with nowhere for that to go. Um, and jumping down to the mechanical system, which is the other criteria in pink. Um, it's no surprise really that that those systems were impacted um, as a result of maybe the added stress of having to constantly mitigate these air quality and thermal issues. Um, so those are some of the top items that stood out to us. Additionally, the electrical system and plumbing system that scored low, those are really because they haven't kept up with code standards that are now in place or energy standards. Um, and again, those would have been things that didn't come into effect until the building was already constructed. And so again, any sort of addition or renovation would signal those to have to be updated as well. Um, and then some things that stood out that were good, um, the interior finishes, as I mentioned, it doesn't look like on the surface there's anything wrong. And especially in this media center, for example, you wouldn't suspect that the building was sort of in this potentially critical state. And then just looking at the exterior, as I mentioned, some highlighting some of the critical issues. Um, the brick masonry not being adequate thermally or controlling moisture and the gutters being broken, the lack of sealants, the foundations being subgrade, those are all kind of absorbing unwatched moisture. And we did want to point out too, um, something that struck us was just that this portion of the front appears as if it's the main entry, which we know it used to be and no longer is. Um, so that's just sort of cementing the building from this time period that we no longer are in. And so it might be time for an upgrade.
It's actually an unused balcony off of the office. Yeah, it's actually, I think the principal's office.
Okay, all right.
I don't think he's going to be handing out a report anytime soon.
Right. Yeah, definitely threw us a moment when we first. And then as a comparison, just showing something that a middle high school that was designed and built in the last ten years. That has that adequate exterior envelope. It has control of solar. Um, it has energy efficiency with a lighter colored roof. Um, the masonry has that um, airspace that's required. And then it's very apparent that one entry is high school and one entry is middle school.
And that's the current Abington.
Yeah, that was, we finished, uh, we finished the design several years ago, but construction uh, and probably four or five years ago.
Yes.
And then looking at the Deer Hill School, which fell, I guess, second place out of the three, uh, with a three point six. And that is a sort of not yet critical stage. And you can see that that yellow color is pretty prevalent in our evaluation category. And that is really the mid-range. So a lot of it is recommended upgrades. Um, and the accessibility issues weren't as prevalent at the Deer Hill, especially it being one story. Um, the interior finishes, again, nothing sort of critically wrong, but could definitely benefit from upgrades. For example, the um, MCT that was added in the corridors for the flooring makes such an impact. And so something we would recommend as a capital repair would be um, fulfilling the flooring replacements in the classrooms and the art classroom and um, sort of continuing that level of um, capital improvements. The air quality issues weren't as prevalent at Deer Hill either, which we thought was surprising considering that this building was built the same year as the middle high school. Um, but we would kind of speculate that just given how much simpler of a form the Deer Hill is, there aren't all of these differing roof levels with opportunities for water to sort of slip into the seams. There aren't older high school kids and uh, it's a smaller community. So maybe these are all things that are kind of keeping Deer Hill running a little bit better than the middle high school. Um, and then the only sort of critical category was that mechanical systems. And we know that the district has already uh, taken care or taken steps to mitigate those issues by putting forth the um, bid last summer for updated controls RTU equipment. And then similarly, the electrical and plumbing categories, those would need to be updated, just given code and energy requirement. And so overall, the Deer Hill, we felt was in an acceptable condition in terms of the physical characteristics. And it could certainly continue in operation for years to come. Um, some things we were, we did want to bring to attention, um, just to avoid the building envelope reaching a level of critical that the middle high school is at. Um, these obvious evidence of moisture sort of starting to collect on some of the masonry care, um, components. Um, so we would recommend that, um, some of that moisture, water stains, vegetation that's starting to appear. Be sort of cleaned, removed, vinegar washed from the exterior. And just making some changes where maybe this window gets a silver pan flashing or something to sort of protect that. Um, some of the seams from moisture getting in, sealants and mortar are always need to be continually maintained. Making sure those weeps and flashings at the base of the wall are um, clean and able to kind of just shed water as needed. Um, so all of those things are kind of continuing maintenance items that we will note in our report as capital repair. But definitely just to avoid getting to that potentially critical or critical level that the high schools have. And then the Joseph Osgood School ranked sort of in the highest of the three. You can see that a lot of sixes. Um, which was not critical at all. We felt like the interior environment was very pleasant. In terms of physical characteristics, the finishes were very clear, clean, and um, no signs of degradation. It was overall accessible, given that the building was built in the nineties. It had to comply by those standards. And the interior environment was comfortable. The lowest score being the exterior envelope also at the Joseph Osgood School. And the district is already aware of sort of the needs for replacement windows and roof at that school. Um, most of the windows have failed. They have this sort of fogged appearance. And that's just a result of failed seals where moisture got in between the panes of glass. And once that happens, you will make remediation is to replace the windows.
And Mr. Haley, the um, the boxes that look appear to be like white, just because they're a little bit whitewashed, and those are the sixes, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess the lightest squares are actually the best categories for the Osgood. So uh, much less red at the school than the middle high school, for example. And then a lot of the yellows would be the category that also just recommended upgrades to some um, plumbing fixtures or electrical fixtures. Exterior and the roof sheet metal is beginning to oxidize. So that might be an area that gets replaced when the roof itself is replaced. We know some of those asphalt shingles have been glowing off and the EPGM can be bumbled in some locations. So those are all sort of items we'll be recommending in the capital repairs list. And then a lot of it is surface level to your just aesthetic upgrades. So there's water stains from some of these metal components, rust that's sort of uh, flowing down the front of the facade onto those light colored panels. And those are sort of easy fixes where you could put the investager to just replace those panels. They're pretty easy to swap out. And same with the windows. And by comparison, this is Hanga Middle School. Um, so you can just see that having those sort of clean crisp panels against the brick really makes for a more appealing aesthetic and includes new windows, energy efficient windows with solar shades. Um, really makes for a more appealing aesthetic and includes new windows, energy efficient windows with solar shades. And so it was likely something that the Oscon could incorporate. And additionally, the Oscon is well oriented for solar, so maybe that's something that, um, could come down the capital repairs list.
It's a direction, so.
That's awesome, yeah. I will turn it back to Troy and he'll go through the educational program assessment and I'll chime in a little bit.
Awesome, thanks Julie. Uh, one of the things I would just add that, uh, you know, going through the Oscon School. That is, uh, that's a fantastic build, like as architects going into an elementary school like that. With the orientation, with a simple organization, with that central stair going up and the, the color, the, uh. Uh, the connection between the second and first floor and the spaces, uh, interior, the classroom spaces. Daylighting is really a fantastic build, there are some things that need to occur, uh, just capital improvement projects with, because they're at the end of their life. But what, it, the, the bones of that building is fantastic. Uh, so out of the three, that was the one that really stood out as.
Not surprised.
That is, that is, yeah. Uh, so going through the educational program assessment. There are, as I mentioned at the very onset of the discussion, uh, there are many things that we look at. Uh, when going through an existing building or a new building relative to a modern learning environment. And they're identified, there are over 40 of them, we're not going to go through all of them today. Uh, but there are certainly, uh, some that we will, but these design patterns, uh, have influenced the educational environment. Influence the experience within the spaces. So it could be the academic neighborhoods or display and visual connections, interior, uh, uh, lighting. Natural daylighting, uh, collaboration spaces, community spaces, project based learning. Like some of those things, along with the items on the right hand side, which are environmental, interior environmental components. Whether it's technology or, uh, lighting efficiency, thermal comfort, acoustic control. A lot of these things have a direct impact on the teaching and learning within the space. So as we went through the three buildings, uh, you can see that the, uh, there, there are four columns here. The left-hand column is the, uh, design pattern. The second next column to the right is the middle high school. The next column is Deer Hill and the, uh, last column is the Oscon School. And you can see based on the color coding that Julie was talking about with red being critical. And then the lighter color, which is green on the screen, uh, that being a much, much less critical and in good condition. You can see just from a, uh, a big picture standpoint. The middle high school is at a critical point relative to, uh, the educational program assessment. Uh, and we'll go through, uh, these particular, uh, design patterns and give you examples. And, and, uh, one of which is the summary. And so if we step back and look at the existing building, the spaces within the existing building. And their sizes, square footages, as compared to the Massachusetts School Building Authority's, uh, summary, the template. The space summary template that we use for each of the, uh, projects, uh, for evaluation and design. This gives you an idea of some of the deficiencies spatially that occur and exist at the, uh, at this middle high school. And you can see that, uh, classrooms that are, uh, 850 to 950 square feet. And the Massachusetts School Building Authority recommendations is 670 to 700 square feet in the, uh, middle school. Uh, in the high school and then the middle school, they're approximately 780 to 800. So there is a significant deficiency in the overall core program classroom sizes. As compared to a, um, classroom that's built, uh, and designed today. Uh, science classrooms, similar scenario where a typical science classroom is 1,440 square feet. But the high school existing classrooms are just over a thousand square feet. So significantly less than what, uh, the MSBA standard is. Similar scenario with the middle school science classrooms. You can see on the right-hand side, uh, of the top boxes, there's a, an extreme deficiency in vocation and technology, uh, uh, space. And, uh, you know, Dr. Sullivan talked earlier about the fact that, uh, and alluded to this within the presentation. That the specialized, uh, opportunities for vocation and, uh, very specific co-hasset related marine, uh, uh, related specialty programs. Don't cannot and don't exist because of the space deficiencies in the existing building. And then, uh, additional examples, administration guidance, there's some deficiency there. Auditorium drama, the auditorium itself is much less in size and capacity than, uh, the MSBA standards, uh, today. And then dining and food service, we'll talk a little bit, we've got to have a couple of slides related to that. And how, uh, that square footage is, uh, overall, uh, deficient within the middle high school. And you can see and graphically on the right-hand side of the image, the floor plans, first floor, uh, on the bottom, second floor on the top. And then the lower level on the right-hand side, uh, you can see the red, which means it's a deficient, uh, deficiently sized, uh, program. And the majority of the, of the building is, uh, in red within the, uh, within the diagrams. Gives you, it gives you a visual snapshot. This is, um, uh, one of the, uh, one of the classrooms. And, uh, you can see that, you know, it's, we just talked about the, uh, the sizes, the deficiency there. Uh, it doesn't have sufficient storage as well, it's not appropriately sized. There's no interaction, uh, within the outdoors. There are some actually, some interior science classrooms, uh, in the building as well. And then the flexibility, the ability for flexible use, uh, is, um, is not apparent. And as an example, this is the Kennedy Middle School, a general classroom within Kennedy Middle School that we just, uh, uh, finished. And you can see that the classroom itself is purely designed for flexibility and the ability for, uh, instantaneous technology use. And you can see there are four locations, actually, one of which is on the right-hand, uh, side of the, uh, photograph that's not in the photograph. But there are four locations for, uh, huddle spaces. And those are interactive, uh, TV displays that small groups, uh, the students can immediately go to small groups. And work with technology and interact with each other in the groups. And the flexibility of space, the natural daylighting, the acoustics, the, uh, uh, mechanical system and, uh, air quality. Is optimum in this, uh, in this classroom. So this, it gives you an example of what's, uh, being designed today. The academic neighborhoods, uh, the, you can see double oated corridor, uh, very little natural daylight. Uh, the wayfinding, uh, in the space, although, uh, the district has done a, a really good job. Trying to delineate middle school and high school within a building that was not designed to incorporate both. Uh, it still lacks because of the physical, the physical building lacks the ability, uh, for wayfinding and organization of, uh, classrooms. Gives you an example, this is also Kennedy Middle School, uh, related to the academic wing, the use of color, the use of, uh, technology, natural daylighting. Uh, aquaponics, hydroponics, um, and environmental graphics to really create an environment that's inspiring. Project-based learning labs, uh, that's something that, uh, Dr. Sullivan talked about earlier. Is the deficiencies in having project-based innovation labs within the school. Uh, this is the STEM classroom, uh, and it is a single classroom. And the deficiencies even within that classroom, uh, are very, very apparent. The next slide is, uh, Beverly Middle School. Uh, this is, uh, they've got 12 academies within Beverly Middle School. Each one of the academies has a project-based learning lab, uh, that you see here. It's connected to the corridor, can be expanded to the corridor. It has all the flexibility of, uh, power utilities as well as, uh, uh, the, the technology, uh, connection. And then, uh, this is a, a project-based learning lab, uh, obviously it's your, uh, your wood shop. And so the, a modern lab for students, uh, to gain diversity and experience. Uh, unfortunately, this is, uh, the setup, the size of the space and the overall, uh, ability to provide. Uh, a 21st century shop or, uh, innovation, uh, space is, uh, really lacking. Because of the physical, uh, size and, uh, organizational space. This is very, uh, you know, in, in the South Shore, Marshville High School is the boat building, uh, boat building, uh, shop. That was created, uh, a few years ago. I'm gonna have Julie chime in a little bit here.
Yeah, I'll just jump in here, the, uh, when we were walking around, we saw many students using the corridors for collaboration space. And that's just a result of them not having somewhere to sit that's outside of their classroom while still being related to the content happening on the inside of the classroom. Um, and so we have seen, or at least incorporate now and then we design it. We do, there's space in between classrooms where students can work in small groups, but still have that access to their general classroom. Um, we've implemented this either in between a pair of classrooms, so each classroom can utilize the space. We've also done it where there's access from the corridors, so really anybody, um, within that academic neighborhood can use the space. Um, it's just an outlet for, to really enhance differentiation between the students. Um, similarly, the display and visual connections are lacking in the school. I mean, when I walk down this corridor, you can't help but wonder, but what's happening behind the walls where all of the lockers are? And we heard from the high school administration that they don't even use the lockers. Uh, so that's sort of something that is creating this separation between what's the learning that's happening inside. And these, again, their students sitting in the, in the corridors, they don't have that collaboration.
That's, that's a feature you see.
Yeah, and in contrast, even just having at the end of the corridor, having a view to the outside, uh, does wonders for just recalibrating that. Your circadian rhythm and, uh, seeing the daylight and additionally catching glimpses into classrooms. Uh, and seeing learning on display has a powerful feeling for the students too. If you're in the classroom, you want to show that, um, you know, what you're learning and you're focused. Um, and when you're outside of the classroom, you may strive to sort of take that class or be interested in something that they're in.
You'll also notice, uh, very, uh, distinctly the difference between the lockers. At middle school, they did use lockers, but the size, we went through a lot of discussions with the school committee, with the, uh, building committee. About what was appropriate and how to integrate them. So they're not, they're not just, uh, a line of lockers, uh, on either side of the classroom. It really opens up the, uh, the classroom and you can see the difference even with the small group space to the right.
Um, and again, we're seeing a class, a, uh, the high school corridor just lined lockers, no use to the outdoors. It's something that we make sure that we incorporate with all of our new designs. Again, it's just having that connection to the outdoors and it can even be incorporated into the academic curriculum in many ways. So there might be outdoor classroom space, uh, that one of these larger spaces is connected to. It might work hand in hand with the vocational curriculum or the project-based learning. Um, it just adds such a warmer environment to, uh, the interior.
This is again, Abington Middle High School.
Yeah, this is, this is where the two programs come together. And you've got a central core of common spaces, uh, that the middle school and high school are separated. But they come together on either side of the strike court, this is the high school side. And then your, uh, uh, your student dining, uh, socialization, uh, type space is, is undersized. And, uh, very minimal natural light, doesn't, uh, allow for differentiation, uh, of use of space and the type of space. Uh, the senior cafe is a good, uh, a good spot on the, uh, atrium area. And that's a great step, uh, into providing that diversity and the, the expansion of, uh, space, but certainly lacking. And the next slide is, uh, an example of Somerset Middle School where, uh, a lot of really nice natural daylight. It incorporates, uh, an educational stair with use of, um, that space that can, that can occur the entire day. Uh, not just the, uh, intervals for, for, for dining. And so that's, that's the goal, is try to really make a space like that, uh, a space that can be used for education, for, uh, assembly. As well as for, uh, for dining. And then your auditorium, as we mentioned, uh, you know, it's original to the building. Uh, it does not provide the, uh, the same, uh, level of, uh, flexibility for, uh, uh, you know, its use. As well as, uh, the acoustics, the, uh, lighting, the overall, uh, uh, performance and seminar use. It's, it's really, uh, it's back in the day. And then there's an example of, uh, Plymouth South High School, uh, that, uh, has all the modern amenities for, uh, for performance and arts. Performing arts. So, eh, in, in a statement and collecting all of this information, the, uh, 214 pages, the executive summary. Based on all the components that we've talked about with the, uh, educational assessment, the physical building assessment. We would, uh, without any hesitation, recommend, uh, submitting a statement of interest to Massachusetts School Building Authority. For, uh, consideration, uh, their consideration for a comprehensive renovation, new construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Randall, Mr. Hilly, appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Earls, do you want to add anything about, uh, what the school facilities committee's been doing or anything like that? I mean, I wanted to give you a chance, you're here.
Yeah, no, uh, we are in the process of doing the SOI, um, that should be ready for, uh, review. Uh, by this, uh, board and the select board in April, so scheduling time for the select board. It's gonna be coming here, so. We do think that something needs to be done, this school is very, very obvious, uh, by this report. So that's the direction.
Okay, um, do any committee members have any questions for any of the presenters? Or comments?
Well, thank you very much for all the work. Do we have access to this form of work if we want it?
Yes.
I would like it. Uh, hello, Mr. Ray?
Cause I think it gives a better image of home, not.
So many questions, so many. Um, I guess a couple of questions. So, so this was just sort of like the evaluation in order to decide what direction we're going in, right?
Yes, with something, it's, it, it's elective, um, it's something the committee, the school facilities, facilities committee felt was a necessary first step. In ascertaining what the current condition of each building was. And we said, decided not to focus just on one building, but as we're gonna do it, we might as well do all buildings to just be certain as to, you know. If we are going to make any sort of, take substantive steps in terms of renovations that we have concrete picture of what needs to be done. So, um, obviously, given the report, um, it's, as, as Mr. Earls stated, it's, it's very apparent that, that the middle high school's lacking.
Just to interject, it's, it's not just to do an SOI, it's, that report is not just for the middle high school. It's for the entire town to plan out the next five, 10, 15 years, money-wise, and the things that Joseph Oscon needs to get done. Um, Deer Hill needs to get done, any renovations and the upgrades, so that the town has a roadmap and we're gonna know what it costs and, so, continue now.
Yeah, it's a really good point. And you can see those capital improvements that were highlighted in some, in some ways, you've already identified some of those. You can see some of them coming down the road, it's a really good point, thank you, Mr. Earls. And, um, it will also assist us in. Fashioning a stronger, sort of more robust statement of interest to the MSBA. And perhaps, um,
to the MSBA. And perhaps Mr. Randall or Mr. Hilli can just sort of maybe summarize like what we mean by SOI, like what, what, what that, the purpose of that is and, and the MSBA core program.
Yeah, so the statement of interest, there's a period each year that the Massachusetts School Building Authority opens up to districts for their submission and application for state. The statement of interest identifies the, there are eight categories, identifies the categories, whether it's overcrowding or structural issues or the ask discreditation, several categories. And the district outlines exactly what that looks like, part of which is the physical conditions of the building and others are educational based and repairs. And it gives, it gives the MSBA a snapshot of, of what their, what the district is proposing as alterations or review so that they would consider that as part of their core program. And so that is if you are accepted into the core program as part of this process, typically, historically, there have been 180 to 100 applicants each year and 15 to 20 are accepted. So you can see the, the variation that occurs and some districts get in the first year, other districts have to resubmit each year. And so once you're accepted into the pipeline for the core program, then the process starts for the eligibility period that's outlined as far as the initial steps for evaluating the overall size of the building, population, establishing building committee and so on and so forth. And then it moves through the feasibility and schematic design process. And there's, there's a lot in that, in that timeframe or that, those series of modules, they call them, that just gives you sort of the interest.
So I would suggest, as someone who I would consider has a little bit more knowledge about this process than the average person, I'm feeling overwhelmed by this. We might want to figure out what our messaging is to like the people, the constituents. It just, just, I, I'm on a board of a, a foundation that supports the school that's currently building new facilities. So I do understand a little bit about how the, the MSBA system operates. And I specifically understand how complicated it can be and how difficult it can be to communicate with various stakeholders and constituents of that process. So I just, I feel like this is a wonderful report. I don't feel surprised by anything you told us. I appreciate you documenting it so thoroughly and presenting it.
There's no surprise.
But I feel, and this is just, I, I feel compelled to say it. I, I feel like we have a lot to do to help people understand what this.
And part of the first step is the select board has informed me that they have taken on a PR firm that's going to help the committee run a website and get the information out to the community. As a committee, right now, we've gone through Dr. Sullivan's, you know, newsletter blast. Some members of the public have reached out, so I've linked to all our meetings online. We're going to do the Cohasset Anchor. So we're reaching out in the ways that we can locally, but we're also going to have that PR firm help us with a greater message. They sent us an example, which, if you want to share with the rest of the committee here, that would, that would be great to look at. It's an excellent website that Norwood,
I think it was.
Yes. Norwood's, there's a ton of information. I like the, exactly the way it's set up. Question section. So it's everything that we want to do to let everybody know.
So, Mr. Clear, you're right. This, we should note that this is like, kind of like the first time that this has been in any public setting other than the school facilities committee, you know? So this is the early, early gestation stages of this. I mean, we're, we haven't even submitted the SOI yet. We will. And, and Mr. Earls has made it a point, as he just noted, we're, we're already starting to look at like the website. And the website is like, it's, it's meant for this purpose for, for building schools. If you have the information. But up until this point, we're sort of at the first substantive step where we're starting to share. And so now we'll start to share that. It does seem overwhelming, whoa, where this all come from? But it's really early on. And so this, the school committee presentation, it will fall, there'll be a, a similar select board presentation. And we'll start having, at some point, there'll be committee, committee forum, forums about this. And it's going to be a lot of discussion and discourse, community-wide throughout this process. But for now, we're just sort of sharing the results of what Mr. Randall and Mr. Hilli had been working on for the past several weeks. You know, which really, I mean, we did advertise that it was happening, but as we see, you know, a lot of it's, it's a succinct group of, of the constituents or the, the community account, they're actually aware of that. And we'll just, it, it's our job to, to reach out to them and make sure everyone knows and we will. But you're, you're absolutely right. But just, I just do want to point out that what this was was sort of like, this is like the first small step here tonight.
It was, it was, it was a fact finding mission because when the committee first got together, I reached out to the town hall and the information I got on these buildings was next to nothing other than the daily facility reports. So that's when we figured, well, we, we're going to have to start at ground zero and work our way. So we just went slowly going through this and getting all the information. So now that we actually have stuff to present, we're kind of kicking into the high gear.
Roadshow, so to speak.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cleary. Mr. Kearney, welcome, sir. Mr. Kearney's been attending virtually, but he's, he's, he's here and we're ready to hear any questions or comments he might have about that.
Well, first of all, thank you guys. Very informative and something that we supposed to do 10 years ago. We did it. The good news is that we're doing it. I think that's very important to not only see what we have. It's good to hear that Osmond is in such good condition. It is a really wonderful school. Deer Hill has, it's kind of the media, it's, it's okay. This is, yeah, this is something we've been talking about for years now. It's just good to see that everybody's on the same page that what we need. And this has been a great presentation. I think not only showing the size of the classrooms and how we're limited to our space on educational, but also too, is we also talk of special needs kids and how we're trying to keep them in the system, keeping them, we believe that keeping them, part of it is, is keeping the families together. So I think that, that is a lot of the part that isn't really spelled out as much as that I think people would want to know that, that not only that, but then you look at the energy efficiency of the buildings and how much we're going to save on costs. Talk about like natural light, like in a classroom and, or, because I, you know, I have kids and they're, they're in the high school. So we've been going around to all these beautiful schools that you're talking about. You brought up Baddington. I, you can just see the natural light coming in. It's just, it's, it's refreshing. And, you know, I just think our, our kids deserve that. And I think that if we could only get all the folks that are over at the sports thing into here, and maybe, maybe we should have done it before the sports events and gotten here to do it. So we're going to have to come up with creative ideas, but I do think that the consensus in the town, that, you know, it, it is something that needs to be done. My question is, how long from start to finish do you think that this project?
That is, so. If, if everything goes, that's, yeah, I was just going to say, if, so if.
Assuming building materials are available and stuff.
Yes, right. You're, you're looking at, about, let's say, you submit your statement of interest this April. It's accepted into the core program. You have 280 days to go through the eligibility period. That's the first module. Then it will likely be, it'll likely be over a, a year to a year and a half for the next phase, the feasibility study and schematic design. So at that point, you transition to, you know, approval of an actual project by the, by the voters, by the district. And then once approval, it goes into the sixth, sixth module of this project scope budget. So that module will probably take from design development to construction documents, another year at least to complete the construction documents to bid. And then the size of this project is going to be at least a two-year, two and a half year construction process. So you can see how that, you know, you, you're at least five to six years, if my math is correct, and all of, out from, from here to a completion, in a best case, an event, yes.
Yeah, that can be a little deflating because it feels like we're building all this energy up and then there's sort of two years or so before it's even decided that we're going to design something. But you can use that to your advantage. You could use that time to foster some community and consensus and get the work out. And that tends to be what districts do when they start to garner support for a project before it even hits the streets.
And to your, to your point, that it's, it's important to start early. Like you're starting now. If it was 10 years ago, that would be a different, different story. However, to delay the project further, you know, you're, you're pushing the completion of even, even more. Some of that is out of your control because of the MSBA and the selection and admittance into the core program. But you have, you have, but, I mean, with what we see, you have a solid case and narrative.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I also, it is a good committee. I think the committee's really fast-paced and as well as quick, fast-paced as much as we can. And I would also say that, I, I would think that this community definitely supports this project. They've got to know what it is. You got the right people out to vote. You're going to win. I mean, that's just what it is. So.
It's all, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I, I have confidence. I really do. I have confidence in this community. It's, it's a family, school-based community. And they come out with the likes, they'll come out with the school. That's how I look at it. I, I, I think it's going to be, I, I think it's not going to be an easy sell, but I think you just got to understand that when you're talking about the foundation of the town, this is where you put your money. This is, this is where we've got to say that we put our money in this, in these kids' programs. And it's not so that we can say, hey, we get the best schools. It's, they're functionally run the way they should. To, to, to basically, who has to stand it.
Sure. It charges the whole district with a lot of enthusiasm.
Absolutely. And to know that for the next 10 years, we're not going to go backwards. We're going to go forward. So we're going to be, we're going to be proactive instead of, yeah.
And that's what I think when I hear a six-year process minimally, what is the consequence of delaying the process?
More money.
And further deterioration of the facility.
Right. I, I get one other question. What are we going to do with this building?
That's, that's. So that's part of the evaluation that would need to occur in the, as part of the MSB program, the feasibility study.
Yeah.
That's.
Taking some section down.
Find out.
Yeah. Well, it's exciting. It's exciting.
Mr. St. Arch?
Paul's last question. What I was wondering, and I know that's far down the road. I lived through the Plymouth South High School. I worked at the old one and then in the new one. And great job. It was transformative. It's like Wally. Like everyone looks up and it's like, oh my God, there's stuff out there. I had no idea. It is, it makes a huge difference. And it's wild to walk into a classroom that is appropriately sized. It feels enormous. And I think that it's going to be really important for people to, you know, feel that feeling. I feel like along with the website, we need to like tape out some squares and have people physically walk. I think when I did a renovation at home, you like drop chalk on the ground, you're like, huh, this is what my island will look like. Like, this is what a classroom feels like. It's spacious and you're not on top of each other and you don't have to worry about where your knees are. You can like just learn and be in your space. And it's amazing. It makes such a difference. I love the approach of working at all of the schools. I think it's really helpful and I think it will be helpful for the community to see, we're not saying throw everything away and start fresh. Because that is crazy. That's too much. I think this really puts it in perspective. It makes it feel achievable. There are projects that we can do, the elementary level, and then the high school just so obviously needs to be a different building. Like, it's not the space that makes sense for our best learning and teaching. I don't really have any questions. I think the presentation is really clear. I like your rubric, like a numbered system. I think that's been helpful.
Mr. St. Arch, the teacher.
But, yeah, I just think that was very helpful for me to sort through all of these ideas. And I also went to this in school. It's already old then. So like crazy idea. Well, we have a locker room with showers that work. What? That's why I would, that would be a thing, you know? Kids should be able to shower for the sake of themselves and their teachers. I just think there's so much that can be improved. And I do wonder though, Mr. Kearney, like having watched one school you built in front of across the field while the other one still exists. And then you can especially, that's just a different amount of land, space and layout than we have. So obviously that will be, have to be a delicately choreographed dance if, if and when we get to that point.
One for us will be one of the last districts to do it, not the first. So we'll learn from what, what other towns have done that are similar size. Desse Pierre, Pierre districts that have, that have done, see what they've done. So far from the first rotary, rodeo once we do it.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we'll be like the last town in Massachusetts, but.
We'll have to go to school.
Sure will.
Okay. Any comments or questions for anyone watching at home?
That's, yeah.
Okay. Is 143, sorry. Is 143 on this?
They are.
They're on 143, we're on Facebook and.
Because I was at my house and I couldn't watch it.
Oh, I don't, I mean, I, I know that they're actually panelists. So I don't.
Well, we'll have to look into that. But Facebook is where most people.
I was going to say, I don't know. That's where like my children watch on TV. But I feel like that's not where our viewership is, Paul.
I, I won't just say that. I do. I.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes recorded, whatever. It just wasn't there. Just.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, we'll look into it considering the point is to be on there. So if you're, and someone actually told me at the Pus Talk the other day, you know, before last, or at one of the last meetings, that the Facebook wasn't working. And so we had to switch that over. And so, but that was only one meeting. So, but most people watch Facebook.
Yeah, always. Well, maybe if we don't have it, then we can send it to Facebook and we can rerun it.
Well, it's recorded too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like if.
Is that available or some variation of it for us to post?
Yeah, this is the presentation.
Yeah. As long as everybody gets to take a look. Because it's really wonderful presentation.
I think that would be very helpful.
That's already available on our website, isn't it?
And I'll put the full, I'll put the full recording in our newsletter.
It is through the town. Just go, like, you go to the town departments and base. Just go to the school.
It's like companies.
Yes. So why don't I just tell everyone that? Because I'm just explaining to you. So the school facilities committee, just like the school committee or the recreation department or any other town committee or department has its part of the town committee. And you can go there and go to its page and then you'll have links to various resources. And one of those things is this, this presentation. So the things like our committees charge, things like that. But, and, you know, and our meetings are also recorded. Those recordings are available as well. But you've seen, this presentation is sort of the substance, I think, of, of, you know, or the most substance, substance of product from our, our recent meeting. So.
And the 214 page, once I'm done reading it.
Right.
Pick one on the way through.
Right.
It's there.
Right, right, right. Yeah. I don't have any questions. I think this is the third time I've seen the presentation. So I'm, I'm well-versed in it and it's excellent. I think the photographs are very compelling when you compare what another district's classroom looks like to ours or our students sitting in the corridor, talking to each other as opposed to a collaborative learning space. But first step of many. And I can't thank our friends at AI3, Mr. Randall and Mr. Hilly, for all the rest. They've been absolute guiding light and they continue to be a really valuable resource. Thank you so much. You're very knowledgeable.
Thank you.
Which is very, very apparent for the presentation. We'll be seeing more of them.
Okay, moving on. Go, Israel. Thank you, Mr. Service. Okay, so moving on, we have a gift. And if you wanna talk about the gift a little bit, or I can do that.
Sure, okay. So we received a gift. They won a thousand dollars from Awesome Blossom. On both the fine arts department. So which is something to accept the gift in. Off it goes.
Okay, for student contest entries.
Yep, potentially. It's for, it's for the fine arts department. And that was the thought right now is that.
They didn't designate, reject purpose of it. They're thinking, if you go to student entries, student conscious entries and student recognition, it's possible to last guy.
Is there a motion to accept the $8,000 gift from Awesome Blossom? Made by Ms. Clear, just a second.
Second.
Second of my question, Ms. St. Arch, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion clearly passes. I voted for committee members. Thank you very much to Awesome Blossom for that gift, $1,000. Thank you, Ms. Owen.
And I guess I jumped the agenda.
No, because I don't think there was anything new to add with the student service form planning, right?
May I say something about students?
You sure may. I guess there is.
Do let something add.
Yes.
Through this processing and thinking. And I just wanna make sure that our, I guess, our plan, two things. I feel like the last time, last meeting, as we were discussing it, the plan kind of felt to me, and I, it's just the way I interpreted it at that meeting, like a shifting way from our original intent. And some of the ex, like ideas and brainstorming that we were doing was more about kind of like what I felt like kind of brochure material for special education and material that I know is provided by CPAC regularly, like as presentations that are, that are attended by very few people despite the best efforts of CPAC, you know, planning. And that's not unique to our district. That happens all over the place. And so I just felt like last time we were discussing kind of the direction and what we were thinking, perhaps there are two things that need to be done. Perhaps there are some school committee questions that we have that we could become more informed about special ed. Like we have done with like the budget process or other kind of little mini seminars that we've attended, which perhaps would be very helpful for us to have like a, a little seminar so that we feel like we're well-versed in what is going on. This is readily available information, but I know that we all are also at work and managing our children in our homes and aren't poring over the website reading it. So I think that could be one separate thing that we do. I don't think we need to redouble the efforts of CPAC necessarily, who is an amazing community resource, is providing this kind of opportunity. But it was my understanding, and I could be misinterpreting, the original intention was to kind of make sure that community members are feeling heard and we're trying to problem solve and become more transparent and not that we are going to be able to like sit down in one evening and, and fix a system, right? But like to make sure that people are feeling heard or feeling like they can best navigate this process. And it's such an emotional process because it's about your child. And we all want what's best for our children. Administration wants what's best. Teachers want what's best. Parents want what's best. I just wanna make sure that we are not being redundant in our, kind of in our agenda. It's not like, oh yeah, this is how special ed works. And we're, you know, we're soliciting feedback from the community, but then really focusing on this process rather than kind of the responding to the feedback of the people. Does that make sense?
It does. It does.
Okay, I'm right on that. I agree with you. I think that's, that's a great way to kind of like what's new and fresh. You know, we just, okay, we do the same thing every year. Are we looking at two different ways to, to get that out there? I think it's a great comment.
I think one of the thoughts was that we get a survey out there to think about themes we could talk about. Part of the issue, I think the last discussion we had was just about the open nature of talking about individual cases of students, which we can't comment on. We can't. And people cannot waive their, their rights to privacy. We wouldn't be. So in, in the issue, in the instance of transparency, like we couldn't talk about it. And I don't know that it would productively. I don't think we're being productive for the community. I really don't. And I think it would bring up, but I think if there are themes that we get that we can better explain and dive deeper into. Again, without making it, I, I get what your point is. And we've struggled with that as well and understanding exactly what, what you, you may want as a committee. That's different from what happens at CPAC, knowing that we can't do certain things. Because, and I say that in, in, just in, in being earnest with, without breaking confidentiality. We, we wouldn't be able to even comment at all on some of those individual cases that might come up. You can't. So, so that is, that's something for you to consider. It's like, I like the idea of diving into the theme, but it is gonna be about processing in, in, whatever the thing may be. And it's gonna be about how we can better our district around that particular theme. It can't be about an individual situation and what we will or, or haven't done or might do or.
Right.
Because we just, we can't, can't engage in that because of confidentiality laws. Am I correct to that, Dr. Sullivan?
Yes.
That's all I'm.
That feels more closely aligned with our original discussion. I just felt in the past, perhaps two meetings, it had, it had, I don't know, morphed. It felt like it was swinging a little more towards kind of this, like what I described as like a brochure of like, no, this could be more delivered in like a, a tri-fold of like, here's what special ed means. And I think that that is covered in a lot of different ways. But yeah, I just, I really want to make sure that we stay focused on being responsive to the community. So in gathering the information and focusing on those themes and really obviously highlighting that in an agenda beforehand. And less about here's how special ed works and like a kind of outlined, bulleted presentation. Because that's covered in, in different areas.
It, it is. I, I do think there's some misunderstandings out there about certain elements of special education. It might be very very informative to, to the community. But I do understand what you're saying. It's not that it's not, I mean, it is available. They can find it. But it's just in the presentation of it and in allowing them the opportunity to ask questions. I do agree with you that that isn't very different than what happens at a CPAC meeting. But I guess with what I just said and with what you're saying, we're struggling a little bit to, to create a forum for you that will get to your, your initial goals. And so, so it would be nice to talk a little more about what, what the expected outcome of the meeting is, knowing what we can and can't do.
I would like to also offer that I don't think that initial goals necessarily need to be like things that we have to be written in stone. Like, if we decide that maybe that initial goal isn't the best way to actually serve the community, then I think that needs to be okay. And I don't, you know, I mean, I feel like there's always historically been a lot of emphasis placed on green, on goals. And I don't, I would rather focus on delivering what really is needed.
Me too.
Even if that's a change in course.
Want to make it useful.
So one thing I will offer for consideration, and I think we can all just think about it. I don't need, I don't think it necessarily needs to be discussed tonight in depth. Is maybe it sort of shifts to like a forum about literacy. It seems to me that a lot of it is about literacy. But we can talk about it another time.
The themes might be very.
Right.
Yeah, I think so.
Revealing.
It seems that we should let the community feedback probably determine. Like, I think it should be a responsive format in which, yes, we are hearing a lot about literacy right now. But I want to make sure that our, like, setting aside this time for a public forum is responding to what, like, the interests that we are interested in concerning. Literacy will probably come up.
Yeah, I think, I think we all wanna make it a meaningful endeavor, right? And so we don't just wanna have it check a box. But I think that, you know, we need to take a measured approach in ensuring that, because I, I think that there is a, a fine balance between hosting a, or an anecdotal gripe session that maybe disseminates information about that, that is confidential and not appropriate for, you know, public consumption. And we need to balance the risk of, of hosting that with ensuring that it's a valuable community discussion and initiative and endeavor so that people find value in it. So, and I think that basically, I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, I, I left, I asked Dr. Sullivan to leave this on the agenda until we have it for this reason, because I think that there's, it is sort of evolving.
It's good.
But it may be better, I think, it may be more constructive to have a smaller, like, you know, two people from the committee meeting with Dr. Sullivan, Sirwanka, Dr. Sullivan. It's sort of really figuring out, A, I agree. Let's figure out what tools we're gonna use to get the word out to the community and get some input from them so that we can have a responsive, meaningful forum. But also like what is the best format? I don't think this is the best venue to discuss that or the best forum to discuss that in, until we have more, I think, refined concepts to, to discuss. And I think, I think this is exactly why I left, I asked Dr. Sullivan to leave it on the agenda because of what you just raised, Ms. St. Arch.
Can we add that to our communication agenda?
Great.
Great.
So let's do it. Just, yeah, just obviously make sure to include the docs.
Of course, always. One doc, so I mean, you're on as well.
Okay.
It's a party.
Okay, so that's good. I mean, that's good. I'm glad we didn't blow over.
It's productive. We don't want the information to be stale. We want it to be, we don't want someone watching it thinking they're gonna, participating in it, thinking they're going to get one thing and we're providing another. And we're, and I just have to reiterate, we want the dialogue. But we, but some of the dialogue has to happen one-on-one with team.
Of course. There's a confidentiality.
Yeah.
Element.
Yeah.
And also we want this to be a productive conversation that brings us forward as a district. So I think I said this, you know, we need to have an agenda. We need to have our themes. We need to have forms and expectations.
For sure.
Like any modern meeting.
For sure.
That's right.
And we can.
Sure, it needs construction ordinance.
And we can get it to that place. Sure, yeah. All right. It's on our next communication.
Which is King Place, April 4th, 6:00.
Which I emailed you about and we need to switch to the.
Okay, so.
It's a few short days away.
Does that include superintendent for Dr. Sullivan?
That does.
That's okay. We'll talk later.
Okay, so we'll move on to finance section of the agenda, which is essentially a vote on the budget that was presented, the proposed budget that was presented during the public hearing prior to the school committee meeting. I'll turn the meeting to Ms. Owen if there's anything at this point.
So I think we've, we've seen the budget worksheet, we've seen the numbers multiple times now. So really what we're looking for is, is there any more discussion to hopefully on our, you know, proposal for next year's budget or are we ready to take a vote? Which would be, you know, an additional increase of $660,920. 3.05% increase from the town, which brings our total FY20 budget to 22, 22,344,252.
Okay, so if we have, I mean, obviously we discussed this during the public hearing, but if anyone have any additional thoughts? And just let's make sure no one from the community has any thoughts they've been sharing. Ms. Clear, do you have anything new to share about the budget?
No.
Okay. Mr. Carey, do you have anything new to share from public hearing? Or questions or anything?
More, more so a probably a question followed by almost like a statement. Fact that we didn't get, like, what we wanted as far as the kindergarten activities. Frustration. Because it just seems like, and then we talk about revenue. We just don't have enough revenue in this town. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we're, we're in this situation. And so you've done a wonderful job with the town people that were instructed to do what they're supposed to do. But the bottom line is, for me, it's, it's, you know, I, I don't know if I wanna vote for the budget. I voted before my time against the budget. I just, I don't wanna be somebody that's voting against a budget with no, no other solution other than, you know, we have to take a serious look at, you know, what are our priorities in the town? And it's not up to me to go up to every citizen and ask them if they'd spend a little more in their tax bill to get the students what they need. And I, I guess it's, it's everybody's job to ask that question to our town select board or whoever it is that makes that decision. So, you know, I, I, I mean, really a crosswind of like, I'd like to not vote for this, saying that it's completely underfunded. And that would be in line with what I've been saying to the last, everybody knows what I say. This requires the schools to not reach to the standards that we should be at. You know, I look at 22 million, I look at cover at 25 million, 24, you know, it's $2 million in a difference, but we don't know, maybe they don't pay their health insurance. Like, our town pays our health insurance. So I don't have enough of these answers. Because basically I wouldn't have a time in my day to get all these questions answered. But I do respect the fact that the people that were, who weren't here 30 days ago, 60 days ago. And, you know, the request of, you know, we really had to dive into this. And it's come up, you know, again, I, I, but I am gonna vote for it because I feel like I have to. I mean, it's, you know, progress has to be done. But that said, I just think that next year, you know, we really have to look at the revenue side of how we're gonna do this. How are we gonna, because, you know, I don't see it on, I, I just don't see it on cutting expenses. All right? Because like I run a business. I get that. You know, I, I can't find it. But I could say this, with inflation and everything like this, maybe our property taxes have to go up. You know, people probably don't wanna hear that. Unfortunately, you know, you put us in these decisions to make. If I could make the decision for property taxes to go up right now and we could fund the school another $2 million, which I think it needs. I, I, but I don't know how to do it. So I'm gonna have to just go with the flow and know that these parents out there that have children in the kindergarten have to spend another $3,500 a year is ridiculous. And God forbid they had twins like, well.
What a blessing.
God bless them. They would. Financially, it's tough.
There was a reduction. There has been a reduction. We just aren't further reducing at this moment.
Yeah, so I just, I, I, I wanna apologize to the families out there that have to pay this. You know, we did, we did our best. And it's, I feel like, I, I just wish I could have done more.
We share your feelings about the difficulty of making cuts in this particular budget. It is like nothing I've experienced.
Yes, just.
It's tight. Every, everything we cut is essential to my view. Certainly, your comments about full vacation, we wanna provide folks. I, I've, I've come out and said that that's a, I think that's a right that we should have here. It's just, I just wanted to share.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in, in going forward, I think that, you know, it is a priority of ours. And I, you know, maybe we even just ask a fan, you know, subcommittee or somebody that could work on this and find that $300,000 budget. Because I, I couldn't find it. I, I, you know, we can find it.
It's like, it doesn't need like, it's very.
So I, I would invite, you know, maybe next year that we have maybe a committee or ways to try to come up with that. And I'm also grateful that we, we have a really good school districts.
We do.
Yeah.
Ms. St. Arch, any additional thoughts? Nor do I. I felt like I had a. Nor do I. I feel like I had a quick voice to my position at the budget hearing. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the proposed FY23 budget for the cohasset public schools?
Some.
Motion has been made by Mrs. St. Orange. Is there a second? Motion's been seconded by Mrs. Kaleri. All in favor? Roll call, Mrs. Kaleri.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. Mr. Dial is absent. The motion to approve the proposed FY23 budget has been approved by a vote of four committee members.
Can you just state the amount?
Yes, I can. Of $22,345,352.
Don't take that slide down. Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen. Move to the school committee section of the agenda, school committee comments and communication. We'll right into the, or I, excuse me, turn the meeting right over to our policy subcommittee, Ms. Kaleri, Mrs. St. Orange, to present some proposed policy changes.
So our subcommittee continues to be to review policy binder. And these are some policies that we present for, hopefully those are changed on. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review them. If there is any discussion, I guess. So I guess for people who are at home, yeah, policy AC is non-discrimination in the cohasset manual. But then the mass association of school police manual is non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. So there's just a little bit more meat on bones on this one in the mask manual. And we have just updated it in a redline version that's included in your packet to reflect our non-discrimination clause that we approved last calendar year. ACR, we do not have ACR. The mask template has a policy that non.
You're trying to mask in, so people.
Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've talked a lot about masks, it's not this particular.
Oh, yeah.
MASC. We don't say the other word anymore.
ACAB, we recommend deleting the current version and replacing it with the masked version. That's a sexual harassment policy. And there's contact information in there that's up with our district. MJIK is not in our manual and some harassment of students. And again, it's updated to include the harassment, the non-discrimination policy.
I do not. It's largely using, using the suggestion.
Arrest.
Which is a wise move, I think. It's just sort of a renovation of our policy binder. I don't have any questions. Ms. Kearney, do you have any questions?
No, I just want to thank you for this good work.
Okay. I can't imagine Ms. St. Orange has any questions as she participated in drafting it. So is there a motion?
Well, we have them listed separately on here, but I would like to move that we approve the binder as included here and rather than making more separate votes.
Just about task.
Oh, sorry.
All of the proposed revisions to the policy binder as just, but were just presented by Mrs. Kaleri. Is there a motion to that effect? Which made by Mr. Clear, is there a second?
Mr. Kearney.
What did I say?
Mr. Kaleri.
I don't know. I think, you know, it's like 155 degrees in here right now.
I think that, I believe that was covered in the building.
I think that had a capital fail.
And I am always cold. So if I'm hot, then it is hot. So anyway, the motion has been made by Mr. Kearney. And it's seconded by Mrs. Kaleri. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion clearly unanimously passes and those proposed provisions to our policy binder are adopted. Thank you, Ms. Kaleri, Mrs. St. Orange.
Thank you.
And Dr. Scholes, who also participates. Okay, moving on to reports. Ms. Clear, do you have anything to report?
I do. Also on our communications subcommittee, you might recall, we reviewed a suggested outline for the school committee page on the district website. And so that outline, Lisa Radden and I had a conversation earlier this week about that outline and have created a plan for putting content into a draft page, like a draft online that we can look at before it's public facing. And so that process is underway. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'd like to add to that communication update. We also, response to Mrs. Kaleri and I have been working with Lisa Radden to develop a survey to go out to district staff so that we could better understand how they might want to take advantage of volunteers from the community. So before we ask the community to volunteer, we want to know how they are wanted, what help is wanted. So that survey was sent out this week to district staff. And then next week we will be going over the feedback from staff and then turning it around and hopefully very soon sending survey out to the community to ask for people to, to volunteer and be able to give some examples of how the teachers envision being, being helped and supported. I think it's going to help the community more readily volunteer if they have some, some like concrete suggestions.
That's really great work, guys. Thanks so much. Any updates from Kearney?
Um, no, I'm just excited that some of the spring sports have started. My daughters are excited with softball. Game today. Sharon, they came back in one.
Good.
It's nice to see, I know that we're working with the, on the finance facilities to get in touch with the TPW to have a meeting. We're still waiting for them to come get back to us. And so I'm excited about that, that we can kind of see who's in charge of what.
I have not heard that.
Yeah, so. Okay, yeah. Yeah, so I think that's been something that has been going on for years and years and years. You know, who wants to fix what, who's in charge of this? So we really want to get that nailed down to say, you know, who's in charge of the court yet? Should we take over management of the court by getting more custodians? So this is a conversation that we've been trying to have. And it's been a couple of weeks now, so we're working on that. Excited about, we're excited about, that I was going to ask also too about the screens. I know the TVs are up. We did have a time limit.
Um, so I have heard, I've been in touch with IT, the whole of this, they've got to get in, going to vendor coming in on Good Friday, actually, to ask. They've got their wives and holidays, so they didn't want to do it during school time.
Okay, so.
So now that they're telling me Good Friday.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for staying on that. That's important. I ask my kids every day. When they go, I don't know, it's like, there's a screen there. Is there anything on the screen? Please tell me. So I do ask them that too. That is, that is something that we're also working on. So that's all we have to report.
Thanks, Kearney. All I have to comment on is collect the bargaining. We're still in the middle of that process with several of the bargaining units renegotiating their contract for the next contract cycle. So it's an ongoing process. Will probably continue to be ongoing for the next several weeks. So aside from that, I have nothing to report. So we'll move on to the next section of the agenda, which approval minutes. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve tonight. So we'll move right into topics that recently anticipated with the 48 hours of the meeting. I do not have any that I'm aware of. But we do have a reason to move into executive session, which is the next item on the agenda. The reason for moving into executive session is number two. In accordance with the chapter, Mass General law chapter 30, section 21, section A. And that is specifically for strategy related to contract negotiations for non-union personnel. So with that stated publicly, is there a motion to move into executive session?
Soon.
The motion has been made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Kaleri. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. Motion clearly unanimously passes. So we will move into executive session. Everyone that's watching, that is the substantive end of the meeting. We will be reconvening just to adjourn. So if you log off now, you will be missing nothing. Thank you so much for coming and participating and watching.
Can we just log off everything?
We will. We can reconvene just in person.
That's right. That's right. So we, we won't have to do that in a hybrid format. So thank you, everyone, for participating virtually. Have a great night.
Great night, everybody. Thank you.